Hutske?
Here.
Danicourt?
Here.
Knower. McCord?
Here.
Tidings?
Here.
Nurse Singer?
Here.
Valentine?
Here.
Sangster?
Here.
Weiser?
Here.
Okay, you want to go with the miscellaneous items?
Sure.
Actually, why don't we do minutes first?
Well, those are my first one, yeah. August 26 minutes, our last one, they were provided via email this time. Last Friday, if you have got a chance to look at it.
Yes.
If you have any questions with them.
Entertain a motion to...
Make the motion to accept.
Got a second?
One second.
Okay, Hutske?
Aye.
Danicourt?
Aye.
Knower? McCord?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Miscellaneous items?
Second miscellaneous item is, we received a resub map back. Turn around with Jake.
I don't have electronic, I'm sorry.
We just have the Mylar. So we're looking at 35 Pun Valley Circle. Pun Valley Circle is just off, here's Dublin Road, Whalen Road, it's kind of a cross connect between the two. This was actually done back in 2000. They resubbed out of this R22 lot, a small piece, this neighbor here. This neighbor had fenced in and had some setback issues. So they had come up with a deal to resub it into this R16 lot of Pun Valley Circle, which was done. Unfortunately, the deed was filed, which separated this piece out, but the resub map, the resub map into this lot was never filed. So they just went back recently and realized that there's an eight-foot strip here that stands on its own. So what basically asked me...
It has its own tax parcel and it's a landlocked piece of property.
So they went back, I believe they're committed to do a pool or a shed or something else to realize that it was a separate parcel because of its setback issues. So actually pulled this map back out, which is the original Mylar, it was never filed. So we just made a motion from this board. These people signed it as well, even though they've already been subdivided out, but we have signatures from both property owners, basically are just authorizing the chairman to merge this eight feet back into this lot to R16, to 35 Pun Valley Circle, as the board had previously approved in 2000. So just to make sure that something that was...
Do you have an issue with that?
No. Make the motion to accept.
Got a second? Any discussion?
One second, I'm sorry.
McCord.
Hutske?
Aye.
Danicourt?
Aye.
McCord?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Okay.
We got that. We'll look at the, I'll just give you a brief overview of what we're looking at for October for the public hearing. We have one sketch plan. It's Vision Dodge. They're back again. This time is for a parking lot expansion into the tree.
Hillside?
Hillside, yes. This is their concept plan. They have some preliminary topal on there and they want to add and access the drive lane starting at the end of the property, going all the way through and back out the other side. It would involve two retaining walls. This one's about 10 feet. This one's 25 feet. And if you give me...
Height?
Correct. Due to the hill.
25 feet.
In the hotel, it's at the top of it?
The hotel's further away. If you give me a second, I will, there we go. This drawing kind of gives you an idea of what that cutout would be. Here's current elevation and that's the proposal. And this is the hill as it is now. So they'll begin to present a sketch plan application to you guys in October for that.
What does it do to their green space? They probably have a ton of green space on that side.
They do have...
Property extends well back.
A large piece of property.
Probably to the creeks. They have a, they exceed in green space there. Issue we ran into last time was there's a previous condition of the zoning board that said no further expansion. The zoning board rescinded that in the last application, which you then went and put in the front facade and we did the drive-through, the loop run and everything else. So now that they've seen some of the work and earthwork happening with the hotel next door and cutting that in, they're wondering if, you know, they can do something similar to kind of cut that and tier that in.
Their property goes all the way back. So they do have quite a bit of green left.
There is quite a bit of elevation. It still rises up until it gets to the, right about there, and then it falls off going back into the creek. So there's some grade on either side that would need to be managed.
How steep would those ramps be to get up to that? Especially on the east, southeast side, it seemed like.
Getting in here?
Yeah.
I don't know if they've put a lot of detail to that yet, but just kind of the concept sketch of just an idea. See what the board's thoughts are before they get into, obviously we need geotech. We would need, you know, a lot of retaining wall design, you know, a wall of that height, 25 feet. You've got a lot of layback, you know, you're going to have to put stuff in there, so which means you're going to take a lot of vegetation off the top of the hill.
Right.
You know, so you've got to look at stabilization and re-vegetation. PRC's obviously had some concerns about it, the height of the wall, and then especially the look of a 25-foot wall of, you know, it's looking like a billboard. Is that going to end up being graffitied or is there ways you can... Can we...
Ten feet plus 25 feet.
Yeah.
It's 35 feet of overall height.
Yes. And then you've got to put a guardrail in the front, you know, in front of those jeeps or stuff there to protect those vehicles. They're just showing a wheel stop right now. But PRC has talked, you know, at least to have it step back a little bit, break it up as you go along. You know, every 10 feet, step it back, put a little two or three-foot planting bed and then go up a little bit. So at least you can kind of put some plants in between just to kind of break up a solid 25-foot wall. There's a couple of samples they've shown down below. Uh, but it would be a pretty tall wall.
Just to put up a wall like that, it looks like it's going to be one of those submental concrete walls.
Yeah.
The, well, there they show how much of the area above the wall would have to be cleared just to put the geogrid in.
Put the reinforcing in the backs. You've got to think of that as well, is how much, how many more trees are they clearing and how far back that lay length go, you know, once you get to the top of that hill.
Probably as far back as the wall is tall. Right?
Yep.
So that's what we have for October, just a sketch plan.
Sketch for October.
Okay.
All right. Quick other things, just wanted to go over attendance for the upcoming meetings. It's September 25th, I know Roseanne's not available. This is everyone else still good for the work session? No issues?
That's the original date we had.
Correct.
Yeah, yes. Have to check with Bob and Bill, make sure we're good with that.
Yep. And then just again, looking forward again for the October 9th public hearing. Obviously, we do have the application, so we just want to make sure everyone's still good for that. And that's not a new date.
And then FYI about the work session in October, it's Tuesday.
Tuesday, 21st.
Yes, that was something we moved back in...
Beginning of the year, let's call it that.
April, May, yeah.
Yeah.
We redated right after 1st of the year, so just as a reminder, that is a Tuesday. It's different.
The 21st of October, the work session.
And we've had a few Oct. Tuesdays, so we're kind of getting used to it.
I think that's all the miscellaneous items we...
Did you want, is there anything to discuss about Baytown?
For tonight, Pete said they tabled the discussion on it. The office building is closed, so they...
Yep. Some of you know this, but probably most of you don't, that the, well, in case you don't, the sovereign acquisition commenced in Article 78 to challenge Baytown approval. It commenced on the last day of the statute of limitations and then it's a couple of days later that they served. We have answered, well, Baytown filed a motion to dismiss and we submitted an answer, which included the record. We fortunately were able to submit the record on a CD instead of in paper form because it would have been about 2,000 pages. We did submit portions of the record as an excerpt, so we put in an answer and a, um, let's see, and a memorandum of law and Mark submitted an affidavit kind of outlining some of the history regarding the sovereign drive connection and the prior approvals that were placed on those properties throughout time. So it was originally scheduled to be argued on the wet yesterday and it's been adjourned to October 8th. So I will let you know what happens. It's before Judge Ark.
Okay.
But well, and basically, so you know, to the, they were challenging the the approval and the authority of the planning board to require, among other things, you know, the connection through sovereign property. And then they're also challenging the easements. So I, one of our points in our answer is that the resolution, as you remember, that night, it was added to kind of make that more conditional, so, you know, I would think that the court would agree with us, but we don't know until we have a decision.
Other than that, that majority of our miscellaneous stuff...
That's all the miscellaneous we have?
Yeah, we don't have any tabled items. Right, work session last time, we approved the application then. We have one public hearing. The second public hearing was withdrawn, was mobile. They are looking at a redesign or relayout of the property, so.
Okay, so that's why they pulled...
They pulled it, they're just looking at some other alternatives or different options on where to put the building.
Green space.
Did meet with them earlier this week. They kind of ran some ideas past staff. So expecting they may resubmit for possibly during November agenda.
Okay. All right, well, if we have nothing else until a hearing, why don't we take a short recess and reconvene at 7 o'clock?
Good evening and welcome to the September 11th, 2014, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. Like to begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, in due public or justice, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'd also like to have a moment of silence to commemorate the victims of 9/11 and honor fallen police officer Darrell Pearson. Okay, thank you for that. We have one item on our agenda tonight. It's a fairly simple subdivision and Mark, how this works is applicant will present their application. Board will ask questions and then we open up for comments from the, from the audience. So Mark, if you'd like to read the first and only application, that'd be terrific.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I just want to note that we did have a previous sketch. Just for the record, application 14P-0023 has been withdrawn by the applicant. We may see that at a future agenda, but that was the mobile station on the corner of 250 and 441 has been withdrawn. So our only public hearing tonight is Land Tech Surveying and Planning, PLLC, 3708 St. Paul Boulevard, Rochester, New York, 14617. On behalf of Louis Siriani, requests under Article 3-3-10, 8-8-2 and 9-9-2 of the code for preliminary and final subdivision, site planned and EPod permit approval for a three-lot subdivision on the existing lands at 1318 Hatch Road on 6.09 plus or minus acres and to construct two single-family residential homes. The properties now are formerly owned by Louis Siriani in his zone R120. Application number 14P-0022, SBL number 094.03-1-20.
It's all yours, Adam.
Good evening. My name's Adam Freeman. I'm an engineer at Land Tech. And the application, like you said, it's pretty straightforward. It's a 6.3-acre property. The proposal is to subdivide it into three lots, one for the existing home that's going to stay and then one new lot with a house on either side. There are federal wetlands at the rear of the property that were delineated earlier this year. The, there are public utilities along the frontage, sanitary sewer, water main. There's storm sewers along the frontage. The site's going to be graded to the, so that the houses are, the garages are located closest to the existing house, which kind of sits up a little bit, just to take advantage of the existing natural grade on the property. Runoff's going to drain the majority of it back towards the wetland. And then, but the roof leaders will tie into the storm sewer within the right-of-way. And I guess that's really about it. Like I said, there's not, it's a pretty simple subdivision. There, we've addressed all of the town staff comments and the PRC that were made during the PRC meeting previously and have not heard any, any new comments, so I believe that we've addressed all of the town staff comments.
Okay. Is there ample site distance for the new driveways? Is there any issues with that?
No, it's, it's pretty flat right and straight right in that area. There's, as you, I've got it labeled on the plan. It's like 1,000 feet or more in each direction.
Each direction. And are the lots already sold? Or do you have imminent plans to construct houses on those or what's the...
Yeah, there is a, he does have somebody lined up to buy the existing house and then he would build the, the two new houses and then put them up for sale to, you know, they're, they're not necessarily sold to anybody in particular, but he would build the houses.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have questions? Doug?
The, I know they, the PRC asked for a sidewalk easement in the front. I see you're showing a sidewalk along the front. Does it, does it connect to anything on either end or...
There, there are no sidewalks on either side of the property. The, the property just to the north was approved recently and they, they also have a sidewalk easement, but they haven't built the property, so there's no sidewalk there yet. There is sidewalk across the street at Triple Diamond Way. It actually ends over at the, like I said, directly across the street, but not on either side of the property.
Is your plan to construct the sidewalks or ask the town board for a waiver?
At this time, I talked to Louis Siriani this, as we're coming in, and he said he was just going to build it. I mean, unless there was a preference, otherwise, he said he was just as well build it, so.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience like to speak to this, sir? If you could come up and introduce yourself, give us your name and address for the record. That would be appreciated, thanks.
My name is Bruce Canty. I live at 15 Brookmere Circle, adjacent to the property in question.
So when you say adjacent, where exactly, are you on? Point out if you don't mind.
I'd be right in this property right here.
Okay.
Right here to the land boundary.
Got it, thanks.
Okay. One of the things I noticed on the revised drawings that were issued, 81214, that identifies item number 8 under the notes, that the sump drainage will be connected to the existing storm sewers. It does not identify on the drawing the downspouts for runoff. One of my concerns is with that wetlands back there, my house sitting here, this gets very wet back here during the rains. In fact, I've even had to put in a French drain across in the back of my property in order to manage the water. So my concern is the, is the runoff.
So if they're going down to like right off onto the grass...
It's going to considerably add water. Because I mean, now you've got trees in there that are going to filter some of that rain out and you're going to replace that with roofline. All that water is going to dump, if the, if the spouts are coming out the back, that's going to dump right down that hill. And it's, now if you were to look at the elevation, it drops off significantly from here to where the yards are in the back.
I know, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark. The state and the town have semi-conflicting recommendations now? I mean, the town, we want them piped into the storm sewer.
Right, I believe the town has an ordinance for piping it into the downspouts into the storm sewers.
And the state is leaning toward going into splash block and just having it go all over the place.
Currently, our town design criteria requires all downspouts and sumps to be connected to the storm sewer system. The, as AJ alluded to, the state of New York is trying to, through DEC, trying to get more recharge back in the groundwater. We have in, in a few instances gone to splash block, but that would require a variance from the town board from the design criteria to make that happen. So applicant would have to ask the, the town board for a variance in that situation. In the two instances that I know that we've done it, the town board has done it in areas that have very sandy soils. You know, they've done some per测试 and shown that it wouldn't be...
It's definitely not sandy back there.
It wouldn't be detrimental to the, to the area.
Very much clay about a foot down.
So I guess to answer your question is probably 100% chance that they'll get piped into the storm sewer?
Yeah, I'd like to see that, that not, a variance not be granted on that. Because that's my, the water runoff's my biggest concern there.
Sure.
Because it was very wet back there. Naturally, it's a, it's a wetland. It's going to be wet, right? But we're going to add more water to that, that's a concern.
Okay.
That's all I had, that's my biggest, my biggest concern.
Okay.
The other thing is, is it doesn't identify the houses. Are they going to be single-story, two-story? Don't know. You know, it's 100 feet wide. You've got a 10-foot easement on each side. You know, it could go back a distance depending on how big of a home is going to be built. You know, the existing structure, I don't know if you've actually seen the existing structure, it's a blockhouse. Depending on what's built on either side of it, you could end up with, you know, Volkswagen parked between a Cadillac and a Ferrari. Right? I mean, so that's another consideration there on what's actually physically going to be built. Because there's no identification of what kind of structure is going to be there.
Okay.
That's actually up to Mr. Siriani. It's not under the purview of this board to to determine what type of house is built, how tall, how big, as long as it meets the setbacks. This board, this board has no jurisdiction over what type of house, style, color that's built.
Okay, so I'll head, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to, sir?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Alan Zimmer and I reside at 1320 Hatch Road. So my northerly prop line is their southerly property line. If you're familiar with the property, it's a log cabin. I've been there 38 years, owned the property for 40. Actually, unfortunately, I lost my neighbor to a nursing home and that's why that property is up for sale. I've got a couple of concerns. Looked at the map. The planning department has been great to work with through the review process. I'd like to thank them very much. But I noticed that the, I have an iron pin located here, which has not been shown. That was done, I had four iron pins when I bought the property. So I would ask that that be shown.
Okay.
I'm sorry, could you just point out your property up on the map?
Right here.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure. The other question I had, the STU board brought up about the sidewalk easement placed on the, I realize that's a town requirement. My question was to the developer whether he's going to put those in or ask for a waiver. Apparently, he's not going to ask for a waiver, is that correct? At that point, we're all going to look pretty foolish by putting that in because it's on an easement and it will go directly into a fence. So I think we're all going to look pretty stupid if it goes in per plan. Talked this over with Mark. I've talked it over with the town engineer. If in fact it goes in, I suggest that it be routed out to, off the private, or off the sidewalk easement, out to the existing paved shoulder, which has been done in other places in town. Mark will tell you when he had his sidewalk hat on years ago, he tried to get an easement and that didn't work. I'm not ready to give an easement at this point. So I, I know there's sidewalk across the street. Talking with the town engineer, he thought it would not be a bad idea to bring the sidewalk up to the range line of that street. So there was a crosswalk or a cross area. Therefore, people could get to that subdivision, get down to the church if they wanted to or down to Plank Road, off the road. All that sounds very reasonable to me. But I think it's really nuts to put the thing in into a...
Going nowhere to nowhere?
Well, no, not nowhere to nowhere. Nowhere to, the property up here, the sidewalk is halfway in and it's in the right-of-way. It does have an easement, sidewalk easement, seven-foot easement. It shows that they need to put it back in, or need to put it in, but it's out of, or in the right-of-way. It's not in the easement. So now you're going to take it out here, bring it here, bring it down here and then into a fence and a foam pole. So I would ask that you review that among yourselves and don't cause the town a problem.
Okay.
I have no problem if you ask for a waiver. I'm, I'm in favor of that. I'm not a big sidewalk person. If I wanted sidewalks in streetlight, I would have moved into a subdivision. The other thing is the existing house has a house number of 318 on it. That is not going to work with the current numbers. If you take a look, this is 312. This should be 14, 16, 18, and I'm at 1320. My neighbor is at 1322. So I'd ask that the, before you rent or sell the house, the existing house, you get that number changed, however that's done internally. It'd be crazy to start somebody out with the wrong number
Right.
and have to change.
I don't know how that gets accomplished. Is that a post office thing?
Between the billing department and the assessor, they can, you know, reassign a number to it, but typically Harold Morehouse, our billing administrator assigns numbers to new houses, so. That's something I can talk with him about and have him take a look at.
Well, would you ask the developer if he had any problems with getting that changed? Does he have a problem for him? A hardship? Okay, good. The last thing and the biggest thing, location of the house to the north of me. I've talked with Mr. Siriani a couple of occasions. My first request was to buy, if you take a look, he's got 309 feet, 9.6. You need 100 feet each. What I'd ask him to do is sell me the nine-feet-point-six to extend my property line to the north. That would give me a little buffer, a little more buffer. It also would get rid of a pre-existing non-conforming issue that I may have with a shed. It's been there 38 years, but of course, it wasn't a problem when George lived next door and it's been woods.
Right.
So now a new person moves in, there's a potential for a problem that we don't need. Mr. Siriani has decided, or said that he wasn't interested in proposing that. I told him that I would pick up the engineering costs plus whatever we could work out financially for that piece of land. I didn't expect him to give it to me. He's, he's not gone that route, correct? So therefore, what I have asked him to do and he said he would do, is that he would keep this house as close as he could, as shown on the plan, to the northerly lot line. So that maximizes the distance. So that maximizes the distance between them, which I certainly appreciate, is that correct? Agreed to do that? The next issue, or the last issue I've got, is the same basically as Bruce has, the setbacks. When I built my house, I took George's front of the house, not front of the garage, but front of the house, I took the existing neighbors, the Gray's property, front of the house, I drew a straight line between them, and that's where I set mine. So I have a 100-foot setback, I have a 200-foot lot. Now obviously, these lots are huge going back. Granted, there's wetlands back there that they can't get into and I understand that. But I would ask that some consideration, this is already an approved lot location on this new subdivision. I would ask that this be, this particular lot be moved back to split the difference between these two, it's now at 65, make it 75, which would be an additional 10 feet, and it would still be in front. So if he went down to, and the other one is 72, so I would ask that, you know, if we could get that setback to 75 feet. I realize that it's a 50-foot setback for zoning, but I'm asking that, again, we're concerned about what type of house goes in there, let's not go in and out and in and out if we don't have to. So do you have any problem with that, Mr. Sirianni?
Well, we, if you could just address your...
I'm sorry.
...comments to us, and then what we're doing is we're taking notes and then we can...
And I've drawn lines on this to show you how that lines up, I'd like to submit to the board.
Good.
That's all I've got. Do you have any idea when the construction's gonna start? Will it be this year, will it be next year?
That's a question that we can probably ask.
Okay. And how long is the, the actual, once it's subdivided, how often do they have to come back if a lot isn't built on town? Is it every year, every two years?
I mean, once the subdivision's done, the lots are created, once they start construction on any one of the homes, we consider it holding the approval. So if they start on one of the homes, you know, go in and even, you know, put the driveway in, do some tree clearing, put up some silt fence, we consider that the start of construction.
Okay, it does not have to be part of the structure?
It does not have to be part of the structure. So once they basically, the start of construction would then preserve your site plan going forward, otherwise they have a year to start construction, if not, they need to come back before this board and ask for an extension. You can ask for a 90-day extension, it used to be two 90-day extensions, the state law has changed, you can ask for 90-day extensions as long as you'd like to.
Okay, well, I would like to, I know the one, the subdivision up the road, they did have to come back recently, correct? The two lots?
Yeah, they were approved originally in the early 2000s. That approval did expire, they didn't do any work on the site, so that did expire, they came back earlier this year, it was an administrative approval since the lots already existed. Those were reapproved, they haven't started anything on the site again, but they may have to come back for reapprovals.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, it was reapproved for the sidewalk location in the right of way then, as it shows?
Yeah, if that's the way it shows in the site plan.
So I assume that's the way it'll be built?
I presume so, yes.
Okay. So again, I'm concerned about this jog and going to nowhere. That's it?
Thank you. Anyone else care to comment on this application? Come on forward. Can you come on up to the podium and... Thanks.
Jim Baumann, 1345 My Line Road, Webster, actually, I live in Penfield, Webster Mill address. I own the farmland behind these lots. And at one time, Shipbuilders Creek came right up between where Gerber's gonna build two lots to the north of here. And it came up through and came right up through this way right here, and all the old maps, you'll see that creek, it's been filled in over the last 100 years. And it was draining all the land behind here, it's about probably 30 or 40 acres back in here, that they had drained. And it's kinda disappeared over the years, you know, the woods have filled it in, nobody's cleared it because we didn't own it, so, and I don't think George feel wanted us in there cleaning it out. So. I just wanna make sure that, you know, the drainage is set right, so that this farmland is allowed to drain. You know, the farmland, the development rights were stripped of that farmland about, what, 10 years ago now? So, we just wanna make sure that, however this is planned, I don't, you know, I'm not against the development at all, I don't care what they do, as long as the, as long as the drainage is, you know, taken care of. Again, if you look on all the old maps, you'll see the creek that came right up through here at one time, it's a tributary of Shipbuilders Creek.
Okay.
And so...
Very good.
That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions from the audience, comments, anybody on the board have any additional?
Does he wanna address any of the issues?
Would you like to make any additional statements or answer any questions?
Yeah, I'll just address a couple of the things that Mr. Zimmer brought up. You know, regarding like the front setback, he was talking about the fact that it's currently set at 72, 73 feet, and wanted to see it at 75 feet. And nobody's gonna notice three feet driving down the road, you know, 15, 20 feet you might notice, but three feet, I mean, we moved the houses back from the original plans we submitted to, to make the, try to match the existing house, the house that's out there and the neighboring properties. So I don't really think that, that that's, you know, should be a concern. And as far as the sidewalk goes, I mean, I think whatever the town feels is the most appropriate location is, you know, we'd be fine with, so.
Okay.
And then, drainage, obviously, we've already talked about drainage a little bit, you know, we're, you know, making sure that we're not changing any of the drainage patterns, particularly in the back where the wetland is. And we'll be taking, we will be connecting the roof leaders to the storm sewer, we're not asking for a waiver for that, that was one of the staff comments from the original plans. So those will be tied into the storm sewer along with the sump discharges.
Okay. Great, thank you for your presentation.
The other comment of, Mr. Zimmer was asking if there was any issue of hugging or keeping the house, I guess the house directly north of him tied to that property line, is there any concern with that?
Well, we already do show it as far, I think it's a foot off the setback line, just to give a little bit of tolerance for construction, but no, yeah, we do plan on building the house up along that, further towards the existing house on our property, to the north as far as possible.
Okay. The, the middle lot is the wider of the three lots, is that right?
Yes.
Might be considered maybe making that lot next to Mr. Zimmer the wider of the three lots? And I know that one has more property than the other ones anyway, but it's really just the useful part of the property, but you know what I mean?
Right.
If you move the...
Moving that lot up. It hasn't been discussed.
Is there any reason why you couldn't do that?
I don't, I don't think there's any reason we couldn't. I mean, the trees that are, we're showing to remain up there, well outside of that, you know, that 10-foot that we'd be moving it, so there shouldn't be any reason that, you know, those trees would have to come out by moving it or anything, so.
Okay, well, it's something to consider for sure.
Right.
Okay. Did you have another comment to make?
Couple of things, number one, if in fact that were to happen, I would be more than happy to put the house where it is, I wouldn't ask for it to be set back any further because it would be north. If the developer chooses to do that, that'd be great, it'd, you know, make the one lot 109, but the house could be pushed over another 10 feet, so that'd be, it wouldn't have to be back for us to see it, it'd give 10-foot more trees, so that'd be great. Second thing in, spirit of cooperation, I'd like to save the developers some money. It appears that there's an easement line that the Water Authority is asking for, 15-foot easement, right? Is that correct, Mark?
I believe that it's at the request of the Water Authority.
I'm sorry?
I believe that it's at the request of the Water Authority.
Correct. Looking at the detailed plans, it shows that the service connections will go to the property line and/or the easement line. So what I would say is if the Water Authority is going to encumber the developer's property, he should then, or they should then, run their service and their stops and the sanitary, everything that's supposed to be on private property, it should be put at the edge of the, the water main, or the water easement. That would allow him to not have to spend as much money to go under the sidewalk if it goes in, or if there's a repair, that would be at the Water Authority's. So I would suggest that, you know, that those connections, water stop, clean outs, any of that be put on the easement line, save the guys some bucks.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, well, we will call this hearing closed. Thank you for your presentation, thank you everyone for coming, and we'll see you next public hearing for the planning awards in one month. Have a good night.
So we have a, we have a draft approval.
You received in, at your August 8 meeting?
Mm-hmm.
I was ready for that evening. Obviously, that one was canceled, took me forward, but you've had, you do have a Part 2 AEF that was prepared and you do have a draft approval resolution that was provided our standard template.
And the developer, Mr. Sirianni, is amenable to moving that lot line north, as you suggested.
Nine feet.
Nine feet, so that it makes that lot a little bit larger. That would help placate Mr. Zimmer.
Issues?
Placates a correct term, but, sorry. And I think that alleviates a lot of the concerns that he has, so he could potentially negotiate with the new owner, possibly to buy more.
I mean, he could either buy that nine feet back from the next owner.
Correct.
If he wanted to, or, but at least, he's the only currently affected neighbor on either side, that the two lots to the north was Mrs. DeBello's property. Those homes are currently not built. Mr. Zimmer's the only house in the south. Mr. Canty is the end of Silverwoods, off the end of Brookmere Circle, there's some existing homes in there, but that's kinda more to the back of the property, to the back of the lot.
Are you guys comfortable doing approval, getting this off the table tonight?
Do we do anything with drainage for the other neighbor that was worried about the drainage runoff?
Well, I think the, the houses are being piped right into the...
Which is, as I said, our design criteria requires connecting the sump pump and also the downspouts.
Okay.
Unless they were gonna ask for a waiver from it.
Yeah, there's nothing more this guy could do to correct or improve the drainage situation with the project, right?
I mean, installing a sump pump is actually, it actually helps at times, I mean, you're almost creating a, you know, a well point that helps kinda draw the water out of the area, and so having two homes with sump pumps and drainage around the building will help to kinda dry that down, and then as long as you're collecting the downspouts, the driveway's set up, they'll convey water back to the road and you have strong drainage along the street. So I think the house, the previous area from that will be collected, taken away, and actually with the sump pumps, you know, they may help to kinda de-water the area a little bit around that. So I think, Mr. Canty, that was his concern, is the downspouts to be piped, they're doing that, sump pump is connected in. You know, Mr. Zimmer, you know, wanted the iron pin located, you know, that's something we can, we'll have the engineer show on the plan, identify the corner. He had a question about the sidewalk, basically, he's looking for stub back to the shoulder, so we can make it a condition if they install sidewalks per the direction of the town engineer. One, we can coordinate with the DeBello lot to the north, so we don't have a shift if that one's in the right of way, then we can look at moving this one in the right of way, so it's not back and forth, back and forth. We don't wanna see that either, so we can coordinate that. But I also understand Mr. Zimmer's statement at the end, you walk the sidewalk unless you hit a fence, now you gotta walk across 10 feet of grass, which is snow or some, at least you oughta have a, you know, a short little five-foot stub, at least get you back to the edge of the shoulder, so if you're walking down it, you know, you can turn back. So if we look forward a little bit...
Yeah, and then what about the idea of the waiver versus, and that's something that I don't really like to get involved with.
That's, I mean, that's up to the applicant.
Staff has planned in the grand plan of sidewalks.
I mean, our town policy requires sidewalks to be installed, if the developer wants to put them in, I don't think staff would defer to have them, you know, basically, if you ask for a waiver, you only get, you get $500 per lot, so you're not gonna get the same value of money back into sidewalks. Yes, you could relocate them somewhere else, but you don't get the same value of what the cost of the sidewalk is at today's rate.
Got it.
That's one of the things we're looking at, actually upping that fee, because it's not equivalent to what it costs for a standard 100-foot wide lot, you're paying $30 a foot, that's about $3,000.
Got it.
You're paying $500 to get a waiver to put them in somewhere else, you're losing, you know, a large, large amount of money that, you know, you're not gonna reproduce, so if the applicant's willing to put them in, you know, I think it's just a matter of making a condition in, just to say the sidewalk's to be installed at a location per the town engineer, you know, with providing a stub back to the, where they locate that stub, but I think it's a good idea just to have a short, you know, for their, the seven-foot easement, all you have is a short little stub, a seven-foot piece to get at least back to the shoulder, so if somebody's walking down Hatch Road along the shoulder, they can enter the sidewalk here and then continue north and then vice versa.
Right. I think that makes sense.
We talked about...
Probably have Chuck take a look at that and see if he thinks that's a great idea.
Yeah, I know we required it on Mrs. DeBello's lot, that was recently approved, putting the sidewalks in.
Do you condition that pending the...
Directly north of it.
...approval of the town engineer?
Yeah, I mean, see, we required sidewalks on the piece just to the north, which ties in, because we installed them with Silverwoods, so they are on the east side of the road to the north, Silverwoods, and there's two lot gap that was just recently approved, so they should put their sidewalks in and then there'll be these three houses here, but there isn't, so we're slowly progressing down the side of the road. Mr. Zimmer cares not to grant an easement, you know, that's his right, you know, but, we've done at other locations, we continue the sidewalks along and we get the easements as we can and fill those gaps, you know, from time to time. I think the other concern of Mr. Zimmer was the, was the iron pin, we can ask for that, locating or moving the property line, I think nine feet to the north is the applicant has offered to do, I think, get some, the existing, or get some further separation there on that piece, which then he said he didn't have much concern about the setback of the house.
Right. And I think that's a win for everybody.
That was a comment of staff initially, was those homes along that side of the road do set back a little bit further than the existing, or the required easement of 50 feet, so in order to kinda have some consistency down the road, was to put it back a little bit, which they've done, so whether it's at 70 feet or 75 feet, but at least if they, you know, keep it back from the road a little bit, and Mr. Sirianni, you know, also said that he would be glad to keep it, you know, as far north, you know, with the houses that he wants. And then Mr. Baumann had concerns about the drainage, and I think, you know, we're maintaining the existing drainage condition as it is and... the existing drainage condition as it is, and we're not making it any worse than what it may be today.
Right. Does anybody have any other...
Any other conditions or... First, you're going to do the part, you're going to move the Part II AEF. You're going to do the Part II AEF first.
We're going to sign the Part II AEF.
Okay.
Moved by Tyus, second by McCord.
Okay. Hetske?
Aye.
Dan and Court?
Aye.
McCord?
Aye.
Tyus?
Aye.
Okay, and then entertain a...
I make the motion to do it.
Tyus again.
Second.
Dan and Court, second. Sorry, Doug.
Hetske?
Aye.
Dan and Court?
Aye.
McCord?
Aye.
Tyus?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll add those conditions to the, the template draft approval resolution, get those out to you shortly.
Good. Great.
That's all our table items we have.
So, we can adjourn.
We can adjourn, actually.
Any other statements from anyone on the record?
We will not have any tabled items for your... We'll actually not have any tabled items for your work session agenda, so...
We can cancel?
We can cancel that meeting. We don't have any, we thought we, you know, we had it if it was tabled from tonight, so...
Okay. I'll move, I'll move to cancel the September 26 work session. I can make a motion, man.
Okay.
So, we'll post it on the website. Everybody knows, but we don't have any tabled items before the board, so...
If you need anything special, it's not necessary to have that, that work session. Call.
All right. Should we vote on that?
Yes.
Yeah, you roll call.
Really? Okay. Hetske?
Aye.
Dan and Court?
Aye.
McCord?
Aye.
Tyus?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So, parents weekend, already started Friday morning, and my wife wanted to leave Thursday.
There you go. There you go. See, this is...
We did it for you.
This is all good for you.
So, we'll see you guys, see you guys back home.
Can I staff it and just say hi to you guys?
The 21st is the one we have to check, because that's Tuesday.
Is it for nine?
Nine.
And we'll do our normal drop on Friday morning.
And we'll call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.